It is 7 o'clock, so we'll call this meeting to order. Karen, can you please take a roll call for attendance?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller? Commissioner Miller? We can't hear you, but I saw you mouth here. Commissioner Keen? Commissioner Brink? Commissioner Brake? Chair Lagnus?
Present. We do have a quorum. We will move to the Pledge of Allegiance for those able. We ask that you join us in our nation's pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. And we have the agenda approval. Next on the list, is there a motion from any commissioner on this item? Mr. Batty?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Miller? Commissioner Miller, can you give me a thumbs up if you're trying to second? I can't hear you. Thank you. So there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none. Karen, can you please take a roll call vote on approval of the agenda?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller? Thumbs, maybe thumbs up will help. Commissioner Keen? Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Chair Lagnus?
Aye. Motion carries. The agenda is approved. We're moving on to item number five. Approved planning commission meeting minutes from September 23, 2020. Commissioner Young?
So moved.
There's a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second? Commissioner Batty? Seconds? And discussion? Seeing none. Karen, can you please take a roll call vote on approval of the meeting minutes from September 23?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller? Give me a thumbs up.
You're still on mute.
There we go. Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
And Chair Lagnus?
Aye. Motion carries. Commissioner Miller, if this might help, from a technical standpoint, in the lower left of your screen where the mute feature is, there's a little arrow. Click that up and then test your microphone. You may have to switch it from like your headset to from your computer or something along those lines, but there's a test feature in there. I would like to hear what you got to say tonight. We'll move on to item number six is Encore Apartments Master Sign Plan, Planned Unit Development Amendment Application. This does involve a public hearing for consideration of a PUD sign amendment application before us. For those watching and those that are on the call tonight, we will have the staff give a report on the item and then commissioners will have an opportunity to ask questions. We'll then give the applicant an opportunity to present anything additional that they wish, bring it back to commissioners to ask questions. Then we'll open up a public hearing. We'll listen to the public both online and if anyone is attending at City Hall and then we'll bring it back to commissioners for consideration and/or motion. So Donovan, do you want to get us kicked off on this item?
Sure. I'd like to present the Master Sign PUD Amendment Application from Encore Apartments LLC. Dean McComas and Marie Dickover from Norhart are here to represent the application. To refresh your memories, the three properties that are a part of this PUD relate to the three-part millions, Legacy Point, Heritage Heights, and Encore Apartments, which is shown still here as a blank on our aerial. But now, as you've no doubt driven by seeing there's, you know, four-plus-story apartment building there. And this was a, this is a planned unit development. This whole, collect this whole, this whole large block here, about 5.1 acres. And the, as part of the original 2018 PUD approval, the, the project did have a signed plan, which included monument signs in the areas indicated here in yellow for each of the three apartment buildings. This is the recently submitted plan, so it shows them in, but they're essentially the same location. At the time, the, more than the planning commission said maybe you want to orient them perpendicular to the road so they can be more easily visible. And you can see they've done that here with these three signs. What, what they're, what they're proposing is to keep the, the sign, there's two wall signs on the Encore building. They were approved to be 30 square feet, which is three times the allowed size for apartment identification and address. And this was seen as, it was part of the PUD approval and seen as the apparent size is smaller since they're up there, you know, tall in the building. The, the next, what they proposed is now with the amendment, is the Encore sign with a different base material, this is fabricated aluminum, and a height of seven foot eight inches for the Encore sign. For Legacy Point, a similar type of monument construction, monument base, and a height of six foot nine. And then similarly for the Heritage Heights, same type of material for the base and also a six foot nine height. The application narrative that's part of, that was part of the submittal did request that there would be a change in font, design. And, and this is something that I did indicate in sign color, something I indicated to the applicant, Mr. McComas, prior to submittal, that this is not something that the city regulates. We generally see that as commercial speech and a first amendment right on. And then, and the sign, in really rare instances, does the sign code mention anything regarding content? So that, but that was, you know, was written in narrative. However, the signs were, the sign images, the graphics were submitted quite different from what the approved signage was. If we go to the original approvals, and this is from the 2018 PUD approval.
Donovan?
Yeah.
Sorry, I want to interrupt you. I believe you're trying to share something and it's not showing on our screen.
Okay, for some reason I lost that. I'm using the same document, but, okay. Sorry about, thanks for telling me. Let me get that back. So when did, when did you?
There you go.
So, so, um, did you, I apologize here.
We had it through the point of you showing us where the sign locations were and it cut off shortly after that.
Okay, okay. So here's, here's the submitted sign plans for Encore Apartments. As I mentioned, different sign base material and seven foot eight height, six foot nine height, and different base, this fabricated aluminum for both the Legacy Point and the Heritage Heights. And, and so this is what I've addressed as the sign amendment. Since sign content, the sign color, style and font isn't something that the city regulates. I mean, aesthetics are something that the city could, but at this point, the city's, it's not in city code. And so, but what was approved as part of the 2018 PUD master sign plan, and this was a, actually a dedicated meeting agenda item because this was after the main building had received preliminary approval. This came in, and so you can see the heights for the Heritage Heights and Legacy Point are five-foot-tall signs with a stone base as well as a six-foot-tall Encore sign, also with a stone and brick base. And so that, that's what the, the applicant seeks to go from then to the, to these, to the, the different sign with a height that is actually taller than the legal height for neighborhoods, residential neighborhood signs, which is six foot tall for the, both Heritage Heights and Legacy Point. And then an actual, you know, seven foot eight height, you know, in excess also of that six-foot height maximum. And I say that with a caveat that, and this, the sign square, sign square footage is all of, meets, meets, you know, the legal, sorry, code maximums for a sign area. There is, for, there's not specific sign code standards for apartment buildings. That's something I'd look to, look to change with, with a, you know, our comprehensive zoning that I'm still working on. But to address things like this. However, there are standards for, you know, for neighborhoods that cap that square, that square footage at 32 square feet and height at six foot tall. And the application has not submitted any, you know, rationale for why the signage would be taller than what's allowed for these type of residential signs. And the, the, I'm sorry, I interrupted myself. and so I think that would be a big consideration on why, you know, why the applicant would like to make the signs taller. If there were some certain circumstance that would warrant that. But in this case, I believe that the, the app, you know, this, the planning commission got it right the first time. And that I believe a signed amendment is warranted, this PUD amendment. And so at this point, the staff recommendation is of denial for the reasons that the applicant has not submitted any evidence that change in site conditions or any circumstances warrant an amendment to the approved master sign plan. The sign height exceeds the maximum monument sign height for residential land uses. The submitted sign base materials do not meet the PUD standard to form a desirable and unified environment within its own boundaries in terms of relationship of structures, patterns of circulation, visual character, and sufficiency of drainage utilities. On this point, I'm happy to take any questions from the planning commission.
Questions from commissioners? Commissioner Young?
Donovan, the original sign was essentially a variance. It was more, it was higher and larger than we usually approve, correct?
The wall sign was correct.
Thank you.
Other questions in the staff report, commissioners? Seeing none. Oh, Commissioner Batty?
Oh Donovan, is the, one of the things that they're asking for is a larger sign on the side of the building. Is that part of this?
No, no, no. That is staying the same.
Okay, so that's not changed. So it's just these monument signs that are in question here? Okay.
Other questions on the staff report? All right. And I believe is, are both of these that say Dean McComas, are you the applicant's representatives today?
Yes.
If you could both introduce yourself and then I'll welcome you to provide whatever additional information you wish to our commission.
Yep, I'm Dean McComas. I'm the project manager for Norhart. I was the one who helped build, project manage that building, go up.
And I'm Marie Dickover. I'm the construction manager for Norhart.
Whichever one of you wants to start. You can provide your presentation if you had anything additional for us.
Yeah, so the, I just wanted to give background on the reason for the change to better align with our company's brand and model. We wanted to change up the look of the sign. That was the main reason for changing it, just to be more playful and more fun looking rather than so sophisticated, just to align better with our company's values and motto. So that was the original reason for the change. The height, it, we went out and looked at different signs and just the orientation of that sign really seemed to impress us. And so we could probably shorten it. But then it just doesn't, the whole sign would have to get smaller because of the way that all the words and everything work in there, which is fine. We were just trying to use up the square footage of the area we're allowed. But we could probably try to find a way to cut the top off.
And Marie, did you have anything additional to add to it?
Not really. I think, yeah, Dean summed it up pretty well.
Okay. We'll ask commissioners if, if they have questions. Commissioners? Commissioner Batty?
I'm just curious why you're proposing two different sizes of signs? Why not just make them all the same height?
The Encore Apartments is the new one that was built and I think the owner wants to really put emphasis on that building of those three in that complex. So with a bigger sign representing the big building and then two smaller ones representing the two smaller ones. I think that was just the idea behind it.
Other questions of the applicant? I'm not seeing any. Marie and Dean, if you could hang on a little bit, we'll open up our public hearing and sometimes other questions pop up following that. So we will open up the public hearing here at 7:17 PM. And it looks like Donovan just ran over to council chambers to check if anyone is in there. Karen, do we have anyone online that wishes to speak at it?
I do not think so. No additional attendees and nobody in the chat function, so no, don't.
If there is somebody that wishes to speak that hasn't been recognized by staff, either raise your hand or send a message and we'll bring you up here in a minute. Donovan, did we have anyone at, in chambers?
No, no one was in chambers at this time.
All right. We still have no one seeking to speak, correct Karen?
Correct.
We'll give it 30 seconds, just in case someone wishes to join the public hearing And Karen, we're still absent anyone?
We are, and I did not, yeah, no attendees, no hands raised, no additional, no additional people. So on my end, there is no one.
I'm going to keep it open till Donovan reports. Is there any additional people that have walked in Donovan?
No.
All right, we'll close the public hearing at 7:19 with no speakers and bring it back to commissioners for consideration. This is, I will note, a recommendation to city council. We do not have final authority on this. So we can make a motion, but it would be a recommendation to council. They get final say on this item. Commissioner Young? And then I saw Commissioner Miller right after she raised her hand.
Actually, I'll, I'll yield to Commissioner Miller.
Commissioner Miller, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh gosh. Donovan, is there any way, without too much effort, that you could put the images side by side so we can look at them? The three images of the ones we originally approved and the new three images versus scrolling up and down? Yeah, um. I know it's going to be a technical challenge. Yeah, I'll just pick, yeah, there's, I, give me a second. I can do that. I guess I just wanted to.
They're on page five.
Yeah, I'm having some trouble with my computer tonight, so. And I'll yield to Commissioner Young.
I, I guess I don't understand why, I mean, we allow things to be larger than we usually do. But I, I'm concerned about even higher. I, as I look at those signs and I stand outside the building, it seems like those are going to be very high for the neighborhood. And I guess I, I would be marginally okay with the different design. I get wanting to be playful, et cetera. But quite frankly, I, we do ask that our signs and our monument signs especially reflect the architecture and the, the materials in the buildings. And we do that for a reason, so that things look coherent and look planned and look as though everything belongs together. So I'm, I guess I'm not understanding why things need to be bigger and why you really need
And I guess that's my, you know, my thought. That's why I wanted to look at them side by side. I guess I'm not sure, other than design, style and the look of it, why we would go ahead and approve the change and especially the size difference.
Donovan, do you have the images ready for Commissioner Miller's request?
I do. Here they are. It's not exactly the scale. So my first thought is, you know, the address, the name, you know, I see the name of the company on both signs, the phone number. Guess I'm not sure why the address would need to be on there. I'm assuming the addresses are on the building, but suppose it's not taking up any more space. Yeah, honestly, I like the first variation myself, but I guess it's an image that you're trying to portray. I understand that. So my, my, you know, initial thought is I don't see a reason to change it, but I'll yield the floor.
Commissioner Batty, I saw your hand go up as well.
Yeah, I don't, I really don't have any problem with with the different graphics. I, it just seems to me that it could, you know, they could integrate that into something that did more closely match what was identified initially. It looks to me like if you took that, you know, the toddlers, the taller post on the left-hand side, if you took that off, you'd probably meet the six-foot height requirement there. It just seems to me that there is several different possibilities here that you could, that you could reach a compromise between these two. I don't have any problem doing different graphics and, and, or even including different information on the sign. That doesn't really bother me. It just seems like it would be relatively easy to, to make this fit the, the ordinance, you know, or what the, the original PUD approval.
I'm, Donovan, I have a question. The original PUD that was approved, the, the variation from ordinance, was that limited only in size to the building sign? Or did we increase the size of the ground signs as well?
It was only in, in respect to that wall sign. And that seemed to me at the time warranted, since they were putting, they weren't putting it more at like, you know, kind of like person height, they're putting in building height. And so its apparent size would be much smaller than the actual square footage. So it seemed to me that, that seemed like it has a special circumstance around that approval.
And I vaguely, and I didn't go back and watch the video and I perhaps could have. But I vaguely recall that the reason why I had supported increasing that size was because of the height difference and the, the visual aspects from the road were different. Whereas I, I think increasing the ground size sign is a different variable and is going against the intent of the ordinance. Now, I will differ from some of my colleagues on the commission here. I do think the, the newer sign proposed is very fitting of the new building, although it may not be as fitting of the older buildings on those grounds. From, from my visual aspect, but I am not a graphic designer or, or wish to be one or even want to pretend to be one. But just looking at it, they, they both look like nice signs to me. And I think had either of them come before us before, I would have granted the thumbs up on it. Knowing that the applicant is willing to shrink the size of the sign to meet the ordinance. My second question Donovan is with, with that knowledge, if they were able to shrink that size sign to meet the standards of the ordinance, would that be enough for you to have said to approve this?
I, you know, in some ways we're getting to, you know, conversation about aesthetics and, you know, which is not one that I think that, you know, you know, planning commission should normally, you know, we judge so much on. However, there is, within the commercial sign code, the requirement that the design and the material of the base should be compatible with the principal structure. And that's why I really did favor the, the 2018 approved ones. And, and I understand what Dean said, how, you know, that those look more, they look more staid. And the other one looks, you know, agree that the proposed ones look more playful. But I thought it fit better as a, it's a cohesive look with the buildings and, and projected, you know, kind of more unified look for the three, three projects, three buildings.
Thank you Donovan. Commissioner Young?
Donovan, if they come back with a, a different design, there's no additional fee, is there?
Um, if there was a motion to table and, you know, requesting changes, you know, and they came back with a different design, no, that would be, that would be within this review, this review time and no additional application fee would be required.
Um, I, I really feel very strongly that as part of our citywide design standards, which we worked on really long and hard. Eric, you will probably remember, I think that Mr. Miller and Mr. Batty will strongly remember the agonies that we've gone through on sign ordinances enforced, like. I am not going to be favorable toward going away from the, the base and the, and the size. If you want to come back with the, that, the top shape part with the little, the wavy thing, I'm sorry, it's been a long day. I'm sorry, it's been a long day, the the wavy thing. I I I might consider that so that that you sort of combined and 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 harmonized. And if you all were interested in doing that, I would certainly make a motion to table. And so that is that is a question for the applicants.
Commissioner Young, would you like the applicants to respond here?
Yes, please.
Um, Marie or Dean, either of you want to weigh in on conversation here?
Yeah, we can, we can go back if if the council feels like like it's not matching the building enough. We do want to incorporate that little bit more kind of playful graphics as that's some of our, I guess, our marketing strategy. So we'd like to incorporate that, but we can look at the base material and try to get something that matches the building a little bit more closely.
All right.
Commissioner Young, I I have a comment as well, but go go ahead.
Okay, then I'm going to wait because you know that table is not debatable and not talkable.
I do. Knowing knowing that the applicants are willing to to modify this, I I favor Commissioner Young's idea of having this come back to us with those modifications. And and for me, the the design feature is is less there. And I I would much prefer we find a way to get to yes, whether that's tonight or whether it's in the future. One of the things I noticed between the two signs when they're side by side, and I noticed it before the meeting as well, is that the the Norhart logo is different on them. And I would, I would hate to see that we're forcing them to use their old logo on a on a sign or something to that effect as well. So I I do favor that. Donovan, did you have additional comments?
Yes, yes, I just clarify that the, you know, all signs approved by planning commission as far as, you know, the size and the location on the site. There's always a sign permit following, you know, the actual for the and even a building permit as well because of the footings involved with the monument sign. And, you know, we don't regulate it, you know, in the sign code, we don't regulate that content. So the logo, this color, style, font, that would all be to the discretion of the app, you know, of the sign.
And that would include if there's an address or not as well.
Certainly.
Those commented as well. Commissioners, Commissioner Young?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to table to allow the applicants to come back with a design that fits the height requirements and and the base matches the 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 building comes a little bit closer to our our design standards.
Commissioner Young, that is making a motion of postponement. Can you set a time? Can you set a time for this?
Can you all come back by our next meeting? And I'm asking the applicants. I'm assuming you want to do this before it gets really cold.
Yeah, we would like, we could do that. We'd like to get footings in before the frosts.
Then, Mr. Chair, it would be until our next planning commission meeting.
All right. There's a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Miller?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second for tabling to the next planning commission meeting. This is an undebatable motion. Karen, can you please take a roll call?
Commissioner Young, aye. Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Chair Lengness?
Aye, motion carries. So for the applicants, Marie and Dean, we can't talk about this further tonight because a table motion or a postponed motion does not allow that. Unless somebody, you know, untabled it in this meeting, which would be highly unusual. But what happened is we've just delayed it essentially for two weeks to our next meeting. Unless for some reason Donovan is going to tell us later on tonight, we don't have a meeting in two weeks. And I would recommend working with staff on preparing any additional drawings or graphics or whatever you wish to present to him to bring to our next meeting. So. Is that good?
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to our next item on the agenda, number seven, other business. Council member Gerard was looking around the screen, didn't see where you were. Do you want to start off?
I don't know. I do have just a couple of quick things at the last council meeting. We approved that a minor subdivision down in the very south part of the city, the two eight, two 10 acre lots that were down there. You guys saw it a while ago. And then we upheld your denial at Forest Hills Farms Dock. That was also unanimous vote. So a lot of discussion was held there for those who listened in. And I think you'll be visiting the whole dock situation in the lake when you are doing the new zoning. There's some movement afoot that maybe we ought to be more liberal in that, maybe not. It's up to you guys to decide. I think as we do the zoning, but that was a slant I took from the meeting that, you know, they were kind of looking for a way to get to yes, a number of the council was. But it's they're unable to with the current ordinances and they thought the the correct decision was made by the planning commission and then they backed it. So that's all I have tonight unless you have something for me.
Questions for the council later? I don't see any. Thank you, Mr. Gerard. Donovan?
Um, I I will announce we do have agenda for the October 28th plan commission meeting, so stay tuned for that, full agenda. And still more conversations with developers and more development. So that's exciting. And so we'll see if we get some more things, you know, more things for the plan commission to digest the next few months. That's it for me. If any questions from you all.
Commissioner Young?
Can it not be another 11 o'clock meeting?
Yes, it will not be another 11 o'clock meeting.
Thank you.
But I'll I'll note, Commissioner Young, that is very much up to us as well.
I didn't want to say that. I'm being diplomatic.
Some of the agendas are packed enough that I don't care how quick we are.
Karen?
I emailed out information to the planning commission members, so I am assuming you all received that. I don't know if that's information that you were looking for. And I and I'll continue to search for seminar opportunities and learning opportunities like that for you guys. It would be helpful, too, if you had ideas or you know what you wanted to, you know, what you were interested in or what you wanted to see. I can search for those and try to find things and send your way. So as I find stuff, I'll just keep emailing it to you. All I have. Any questions for anybody?
I don't see any. Thank you, Karen. We'll go around commissioners, Commissioner Batty?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller?
Nothing new.
Commissioner Young?
Nothing new. Feel better, Justin?
Commissioner Brink, did you have any comments?
And of course, my computer just froze there. Did you ask me? I have nothing new.
Correct. Thank you. And my only comments are, I I did have some, I did have some conversation with some people in the Chestnut Creek neighborhood that had conflicts with the development there and watershed rules in the city. And I was able to connect with Donovan and he provided some information and some background on that pretty quick. But it did, it did seem that there, there was a lot of correct things done by the city and maybe some things not so good from from the developer that we have over there that are a little concerning with some of those neighbors. So I just wanted to note that for the record tonight as well. We are done with other business unless somebody else has things. We can move on to item number eight, adjournment. Commissioner Miller?
Love all you guys, but I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Is there a second? Commissioner Batty seconded. So we have a motion and a second. Adjournment is non-debatable. Karen, can please take a roll call?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Chair Lengness?
Aye, motion carries. We are adjourned at 7:40 P. M. Thank you, everybody.
Right.